We good to start?
Good.
Everybody good? Okay. So, we are gonna call the April thirtieth, twenty twenty four Joint Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors a special meeting to order. It is three o'clock. And Supervisor, I believe it's Zenger is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, can I get a acknowledgement of certificate of posting?
So moved.
Second. I'm gonna give it to Cosmickey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we are on regular agenda. We do not do anything that's not on the agenda because it is a special board meeting, just so the public is aware. And we're gonna turn it over to Abraham.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and planning commissioners. Great to see you all here together once again. Abraham Prado, Director of Planning and Building Services, County of San Benito. Today's staff has prepared a presentation addressing the twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one Housing Element Update prior to its release to the public. This presentation will be provided by our consultants, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, who were awarded the contract of the Housing Element Update, the work that we've been collaborating with them. And the board approved the contract back in May of last year. As you're aware, the Housing Element is a state mandated document that addresses state and local housing needs and also sets forth policies and programs aimed at the attainment of these important goals. The county is required to update the Housing Element every eight years. And the last update that was done by the county was the two thousand and fourteen, twenty twenty-three Housing Element Cycle. And so, part of the information that you will be provided today, some of it, some of which you have already received, such as the regional housing needs allocations, but other new information such as the sites inventory map, which shows where the arena allocations are planned for. And love to have your input on that. And also, a timeline of efforts to date and then obviously next steps as well. And that's just amongst other information that you'll be receiving today. And with that, I wanna pass it on to Bryant Delatorre and also Dave Barquist, who are here from Kim Lee Horn. Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham. Hello, my name is Bryant Delatorre, again with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. We have Dave Barquist here as well. We've been working with staff for, I think the contract was awarded in May, I think we began in August or something like that. So, this work, you'll be able to see it within the next two to three weeks or so. We're getting ready to prepare a public review draft for you all to see and for the rest of the public to see. So, this will be the first time, you know, the public, and you get to see, you know, sites and work. So, this will all be new, some of it will be a bit redundant, so we'll just go through it. So, again, we'll go through the Housing Element overview, just requirements, some of the characteristics, some of the sections that are in there. Review our arena, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, go through that. Review our sites are identified to accommodate arena. And then, like Abraham mentioned, we'll look at our efforts to date and then steps forward. So, what is the Housing Element? So, when we, when we think about the Housing Element, it's a chapter of the general plan. And it's the only element that has to be updated regularly. So, for most jurisdictions, it's every eight years. And this is the only element that needs to be reviewed by HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So, that's who we will submit to, they'll review it for compliance with the statute. If there is anything that's out of statute, they'll return comments and we'll go through that whole process. So, the Housing Element identifies housing needs broken down by income categories. So, this was projected out at the state level. And in a sec, we'll go through kind of how that process goes. But for the County of San Benito, we have our own allocation, City Hollister has their own, other counties jurisdictions all have their own. So, the Housing Element provides goals, policies, programs to accommodate our need, address any housing conditions, any housing issues, any constraints, overcome those constraints. And ultimately, the goals and the policies within the program are meant to be implemented so that we can reach our arena goal. And this, the Housing Element, like I mentioned a second ago, requires certification by the state. And certification allows the county to be eligible for grants, programs, gives us priority as well to address housing and housing-related issues in the county. So, the reason housing elements are updated regularly is to make sure it's compliant with state law. So, as many of you all know, state law is, continues evolving. Within the last five years, there's been hundreds of housing-related laws that have been implemented and enacted. So, it's jurisdiction's responsibility to keep up to date with all of those updates as well. Again, it establishes a plan so that we can meet our housing goals and our housing need within our community and also the region as a whole, just because housing is not just a localized issue, it's really regional statewide, really. Our plan is meant to demonstrate that the county has the ability to accommodate its future need and also its current need, because there also is a current need. And this, this process is meant to engage the community. Well, at the end of this presentation, we'll see the efforts to date, some of the workshops and community events that we've had to engage the public and then future plan. So, like I mentioned a second ago, state grants are, the Housing Element being certified allows us to be eligible for state grants and funding and various housing-related programs. So, in the document that you'll see, you'll see it's kind of broken down, it's a layered, layered approach. First, we look at our demographics, so this is our population, our housing count, housing conditions, a lot of data, data heavy at the beginning, and then we evaluate our constraints. So, our biggest constraint in the county is infrastructure, so available infrastructure for housing and for future housing. Then we look at environmental issues, we look at local issues, so governmental issues, do any of our policies prevent us from, you know, meeting our arena goals? This next piece, AFFH, it's relatively new and required in the Housing Elements. We need to ensure that we're, the county as a whole is affirmatively furthering fair housing. So, what this means is if there's any fair housing issues, is the county exacerbating those conditions? Or are they aiming to, you know, reduce these issues and address these issues? So, that's, a lot of that is addressed through our housing programs and policies. What we address if there's any housing issues, how are we gonna address those? Then we go into the housing site section, so this is where we identify specific sites that can accommodate housing. These sites are not the only sites that can accommodate housing, these are just the sites that are selected for the Housing Element that are identified as sites to accommodate our housing. And then we evaluate our past programs, just to see what, how did we do in the last cycle? Were our policies effective, were our programs effective? Should we modify them, did we complete them, so on and so forth? And then, yeah, we complete these programs, we have to have quantifiable objectives so that we can meet them and report them. So, every year, staff will complete an annual progress report of every single program. And just to see, where are we, how did we do? And that's kind of a benchmark to see, do we need any modifications and updates to our programs? So, we go into arena, so our Regional Housing Needs, Accommodation. So, this, this total arena number, it's, first it starts at HCD, so at the state level, there's a number for the whole entire state, and then they kind of break it down by councils of government. So, here locally, we have the San Benito County Government. And then, at that level, we break it down further to individual jurisdictions. So, this arena process, that's what kicks off the whole Housing Element process. So, once we have our numbers, we're able to plan for our accommodation. So, it's, our arena is broken down by income category, and in a second, we'll see what that is. And this total arena number, it's based off of projections, both at the county and at the local level, of population growth, economic growth, job growth. And there's a lot that goes into that, and it's in the final arena determination, all the methodology is in there. Alright, so then, like I mentioned, we go from the state, from HCD down to San Benito County Council of Governments. And that's where we break down the share of our region. So, for this six cycle, which covers twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one, our allocation is to seven hundred and fifty-four total units. And that's further, that's just for the unincorporated counties, so anything that's not incorporated. So, all land minus our two incorporated cities. So, this is broken down, as you'll see, at very far right, we have about a third of it would fall into the very low income. So, this is all income categories for households up to fifty percent of the median family income. So, when we talk about median family income, that's the income for our region as a whole. So, in San Benito County, HCD has the income limit for a family of four, for a hundred and forty thousand approximately, which you'll see here at the very bottom, if you can see my clicker. Oh, no, you can't, at the very bottom. So, our, our median family income is a hundred and forty thousand for a family of four. So, when we look at these income ranges, we're using the basis of family of four. Family sizes, these income categories will be adjusted by family sizes. But just for the sake of this comparison, it's for a family of four, with that leaving family income of a hundred, approximately a hundred and forty thousand. So, for the low income category, we have a hundred and ninety-eight units, for the moderate income, a hundred and three. And then you'll see the very last one, above moderate, two hundred and seven. So, for moderate and above moderate, that's essentially any household making eighty-one percent or more of the local area median income. We have about three hundred and ten, yeah, three hundred and ten of our units will be, will fall into that category. And at the very, very bottom, if you can see the asterisk, so approximately thirty-seven point six of all households in San Benito County fall into either extremely low or low income categories. So, that's below eighty percent of the median family income. So, we'll see that the, that total doesn't exactly correlate with the breakdown of our income, but it's meant to address that, that need. And then here, we'll see our change from the fifth cycle to the sixth cycle. We'll see we have an overall drop, a decrease, sorry, of total units that we're required to accommodate for. So, in our fifth cycle, which was from twenty fourteen to, or sorry, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, the county was required to accommodate eight hundred and thirty-seven total units. For this cycle, it's been decreased to seven hundred and fifty-four. The required accommodations per income category have changed. So, you'll see for the first two categories, very low and low income category, we have an increase, so general increase. But for moderate and above moderate, we have a decrease. So, that can be contributed to a lot of the recent development being market rate. So, there may not be as high of a need for marquery housing and more of a need for affordable housing. So, then now we'll go into our sites, our methodology for identifying sites, reasons why we accommodate our sites, and then also kind of the guide, HCD's kind of guide to accommodating sites. So, HCD has a guidebook essentially of best practices for identifying sites. So, in that guidebook, we'll see that sites should ideally be near community resources, services, resources, public transportation, just anything that, that, that we all, so we all need to go to the grocery store, we all need access to, you know, main corridors, main roads. So, we want to make sure that we can accommodate our sites in areas that are accessible. And then we want to make sure that our sites are affirmatively furthering fair housing. So, we want to make sure that these sites are spread out throughout our community and not concentrated in specific areas. So, we don't want to have all of our low income accommodation in one area and then have all of our above moderate in one area. We want to make sure that we integrate our housing by income category and spatially distribute those as well. And then we want to make sure that our zoning can accommodate our housing. So, HCD determines that for our county, for San Benito County, we can accommodate, we can reasonably accommodate affordable housing if our zoning accommodates twenty dwelling units or more. And that's, that's almost a assumed, we can automatically assume that without having to provide any additional reasoning assumption. It's called default density, it's a default density provision through the state, it's government code as well. So, any, any zoning of twenty dwelling units or more is assumed to be, have some type of affordable component to it, just by design. Alright, so now we go into, one of our biggest policies within the document is a rezone of twelve parcels throughout the county. Most of, or all of our parcels are really at the periphery of the City of Hollister, which is because that's where we have access to, to infrastructure, that's readily available and can be, these parcels may not all be connected to, to existing infrastructure, but it's extremely near to it, it's really just a hookup, which would require a separate agreement with utility providers. But you'll see in a second the map of where they're distributed. But, yeah, so based off of what HCD allows us to assume, we assume that the existing zoning, which allows up to a maximum of twenty dwelling units per acres in the city, in the county, is a constraint to that quote-unquote affordable development by design. So, we determine that an increase to the approved, to be allowed density in strategic areas, what allowed the county to both accommodate its housing and also increase capacity for applicants, developers, residents to increase density throughout the county. So, we'll see that this density, we're proposing to increase from a maximum of twenty to a range, so that range would be from fifteen to thirty-five dwelling units per acre. And this estimate is very similar to what we're seeing here in the City of Hollister. So, we think that that can kind of be replicated throughout in strategic areas in the county. And then here, it's kind of hard to see, it's very small, but we'll see kind of a breakdown of where all of our arena is being accommodated. So, we'll start at the very, very top, so we'll see our arena for this cycle. We have broken down by income category for a total of seven hundred and fifty-four. And then, we accommodate some of that three eighty, projected eighty U construction. So, the way we got this total, very far right, of two hundred and nineteen, is an estimate of the last three years. We got an average, and then we also projected out for all the applications that are currently in the pipeline. We, we average out those last three years, including this year, and then projected that out for eight years. So, every, every year of this cycle. So, once we projected that out, we got a total of two hundred and nineteen, broken down by income categories. So, this income category breakdown is guided by, not AMBAG, but ABAGs. They have an ADU guidebook that HCD has vetted and approved, that they allow us to make these assumptions. Next, we go down to pipeline projects. So, pipeline projects are projects that have already either been approved and haven't been permitted. They have, you know, applicant is approved and hasn't just pulled permits, or projects that are currently being reviewed and are anticipated to be both approved and permitted, developed within, within the planning cycle. So, for, for pipeline projects, we get a bulk of it, so two thousand four hundred and nine, broken down by, by these income categories. And then, lastly, we have units that we can already take credit for, so these are units that were developed, finalized, received certificate of occupancy within this planning period already. So, beginning from July first of last year through now. So, this number has increased now, but this is just a basis. This number of units receiving CFOs will continue increasing throughout, throughout the cycle. So, once we have all of those, we subtract that from our need, and we see that our moderate income and above moderate income is essentially, we've met it just through pipeline projects, ADU projections, and units that have already been constructed. And we have an outstanding need of sixteen extremely low or very low income units. So, to make up for that and also to, to increase our capacity, we have our multifamily residential rezones, so this is our, I think we're terming it R four right now, or R high. Terminology can change and will change, but we, we increase the capacity to an additional two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven additional units. Most of it being on, or sorry, a bulk of it being on vacant sites and some of it on non-vacant sites as well. And the reason why we want to get a buffer is because, you know, pipeline projects, projections, they may not play out as, as expected, so we want to have a buffer to make sure that we're not, we're able to meet our arena and we're not relying on, you know, one site to accommodate our arena. We want to make sure we have additional sites that are gonna allow us to meet our arena regardless if, you know, project A or project B don't, don't follow through. So, yeah, so that, that's, that's our, our sites. And then we can see it visually here, we can zoom in, I think that's a little small to see, but just visually, you'll see the kind of the shaded out area in the middle. That's the City of Hollister, so you'll see everything that's really surrounding Hollister. In the green, zoom in in a second, but just for the sake of the legend, in the green are sites that are identified to be rezoned. And then in that, like, orange color, those are pipeline projects. So, you'll see like on the far right, we have like Santana Ranch, the bottom left, we have like San Juan Oaks. So, you'll see those are all projects that are either approved and haven't been entitled, are under construction or under review. So, we see here, it's kind of like the southwest side, we have a series of parcels. There's one or two, which you'll see at the top left, that's kind of a little island within the City of Hollister. It's a vacant property that we've taken advantage of to accommodate our arena. You'll see many of these are vacant or almost entirely vacant. Then we have here, it's kind of the east side, it's close to Santana Ranch. Now, we have two additional parcels here, sorry, three additional parcels here, one small, one there, are three. And then here in the northwest, we'll see kind of like that island parcel that we mentioned a second ago. Another kind of island one on the north side of the city, and then another one on the southwest. So, now we're going to efforts to date, so these are just public events that were made public. We had engagement through each and one of these events. So, two years ago in September, COG, Individual Jurisdictions, the county participated in the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership Housing Element Workshop, so we see with MBEP. MBEP hosted it, I know the county and jurisdictions were participating in as well. So, MBEP just presented what the Housing Element is, what the deadlines are, what the processes are. And then, they had their white paper for housing policy recommendations of how to address fair housing issues, how to address housing need throughout, throughout the region. Much of that, I think all, all of the recommendations were in one way or form incorporated into our document. And, yeah, this is really, we went through their white paper and considered their recommendations and adjusted as needed to fit our specific context here in the county. And then, we had our joint session kickoff, so this is when the contract was awarded to introduce, you know, this document, alright, this is the, the project and we're kicking it off. Now, we push forward to September of last year, twenty twenty-three, we had our first community workshop in this room. So, our team, Kim Lee Horn and staff, we presented both English and Spanish. I did English part, Abraham did Spanish. We presented, we had a packed house, I believe some of our commissioners and board members were here. We got a lot of engagement and a lot of good feedback that we're able to incorporate into our document. So, we did this early on in the process, just because we wanted to get as much feedback as we could, as we could on the front end. And we got a lot of good feedback on there, and we really just presented what the Housing Element was, what the implications of the Housing Element are, and ways that people can interact and engage with the process. So, yeah, some of that feedback, we, we had participants that, they noted, you know, the, the high cost of housing, the affordability of housing is, is a limitation for the housing choice. And not only affordability, but just housing choice in general. There's participants who mentioned that they have family members, friends who want to live in San Benito. They may work in San Benito, in, in, in San Benito, and they want to live here, but there's no options, there's not a lot of vacancy. So, we had that issue, that issue noted to us. We shared that, yeah, there is a lot of competition for, for housing. And we noted the, the greater need for a variety of different housing types as well. And then, we kind of ended with, with the activity of where would they like to see, where would participants like to see housing accommodated? So, we got a couple of specific areas, so here we noted areas bordering the City of Hollister and along major corridors. So, now we move on to next steps. So, currently, we're drafting our public review draft. Like you mentioned at the beginning, we're very close to that, we anticipate within the next two or three weeks, we'll have this draft ready for you all to see, for the public to see, to get additional feedback so that we can incorporate. So, today, we have our, our joint, joint meeting. And then, in, within the month of May, we, we plan to publish our public review draft, post that, have that available. As soon as that's posted, we'll have an online survey. Essentially, it's a feedback form to get feedback on every specific section. And that'll be open to the public and it'll be open essentially throughout the whole process. So, at any time, anyone can go onto that webpage on the county's website and provide their feedback there. On May twenty-first, we'll be back in here to have our, our second joint meeting, and this will be to discuss the specifics of the document. So, hopefully by this time, we'll have, had some time to look at the specifics. So hopefully by this time we'll have, had some time to look at the specifics, look at the sites, look at the, the policies, the programs, and have some feedback for, for us so that we can adjust the document wherever, wherever needed so that we can get it ready to submit to the county. Uh, sorry, to HCD. And then the day right after our joint meeting, we'll have a community workshop. I believe that's also in here? Nope. Yes. So we'll have a community workshop again. We have a, a, an extensive mail list that will contact all, all of our stakeholders, people who have been interested throughout the program, everyone who, who participated in the first workshop. And it'll be, we'll also have an in-person flyers, you know, online notifications to make sure that we can get as much engagement as possible. And then in June, in, in early June, we plan to formally submit to HCD. So once we formally submit, there's a ninety-day period where HCD has to review this. So during that period, that'll be them reviewing it for compliance with, with statute. And then at that mid-review period, so about forty-five day mark, that's when we'll request like a mid-review to get any, you know, preliminary comment so that you can further revise the document to make sure that it is compliant. And this is kind of a summary, summary of that. So end of last year, fall, going into winter, going into now, working through community engagement efforts, working through all the documents, and then now going into public review draft, posting, getting our workshops, and then finally submitting. So once we submit, we'll receive comments back from the state, we'll address those comments, and then we submit. And then we're looking at turnaround time. Once we receive comments from them, we should be able to turn it around back to, to the state within about a month or two. And then after that, they have an additional sixty days to review the document. So we're looking at a HCD, or, or, sorry, adoption hearings and HCD certification end of this year into the beginning of next year. And with that, we're here to open questions, available, staff's available. I can move back through the section as well.
Okay, I think before we open it up to all of us up here, we need to open it up to public comment.
If you would like to make a public comment in chambers, please provide the clerk with your speaker card. If you would like to make a public comment through Zoom, please raise your hand or press the star nine button.
Chair, I have no public comment.
Bringing it back to the board and commissioners, Supervisor Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Sister Delatory. Now, question for you. As you gave us the numbers, could you give us a, a growth rate percentage of what you saw in terms of those projects in the pipeline or those that have already been built? What number are we looking at that this community has sustained?
Sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
I'm looking to see what, what was the growth rate that we, that we actually materialized, actualized since-
In the last cycle?
Since our last cycle, yes.
Oh, in the last cycle, I know we, we didn't meet arena. I believe we, it was about sixty percent of our total arena, and most of that was up in the above moderate category.
Yes, okay. So you're telling us something that we all already know. And so four or five years ago, when we're looking at the, the fifth cycle arena numbers, we know that the low and very low were not addressed at all. It was all above market houses that were built. So what is the consequence to the municipality when they don't meet their numbers? What's the worst case scenario? What are we looking at?
Yeah, so in past cycles, not to say there wasn't any repercussions, but now moving forward, before getting certified, this HCD makes sure that there's quantifiable objectives that we need to meet, and also kind of like reflection points within the, the planning period where the jurisdiction needs to evaluate if there was any progress. If there wasn't any progress, typically within a, a program that's adopted, the, the jurisdiction will be required to commit to any adjustments, you know? If you don't meet fifty percent of your arena by year six, for example, you have to, you know, add additional programs or policies or something like that. But, yeah, and then other repercussions, you know? No access to, to funds, no priority to, to funding, housing funding, emergency shelters. A lot of those funds are dependent on, on a compliant housing element. So there's that. And then also, if, if a county just won't comply with, with the certification process and doesn't get certified, we've seen various jurisdictions across the state where, where, you know, HCD will come if it has to be escalated to the state attorney or something like that, in that case. But that won't be the case for the county. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's in, in, in our best interest to, to go through the process and get certified.
Well, I'm just going back and comparing the fifth cycle, that the reality was we did not even touch our low to very low numbers at all, and we, we far exceeded the above-market rate. And, and that's where we came in four years ago, the supervisors that were, were on the board when, when I started. But I just don't want to see that happen again, so I just want to see what the real consequences are. And does the state really crack down and those, give us potential of what they could do? Do they really?
We are finally starting to see it now through the sixth cycle. We have jurisdictions who have been in this sixth cycle for, so every, across the state, they, we're all in the sixth cycle, but that sixth cycle could be different years. So say, for example, down in San Diego, they're about two years ahead of, in their sixth cycle. So now we're trying to, we're starting to see some of that. And I'm not sure of specific examples, it's a bit too early to tell, but usually that like enforcement is, is done at the, at the front end to make sure that jurisdictions are self-checking themselves, self-evaluating themselves, so that midway through the point, through the period, there is, you know, specific consequences, usually it's monetary in the form of grants.
I have one other question. You identified twelve sites in San Benito County that are potential developmental, development parcels. How and where did we come up with those sites?
Yeah, so the, the first criteria, or there, there was a lot of criteria. The biggest criteria was a constraint of infrastructure, available infrastructure. So we want to make sure we had water, sewer, you know, electricity. So that, that was really the, the biggest determining factor of where it's available. So you'll see most of these are, are surrounding the city where there is available infrastructure for, for these parcels. So that was kind of the biggest determining factors. The next was availability to resources and services. So we're, are, try to get us close to, you know, city, county services and, and, and resources.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback off of Keith's question. When are we going to hear more detail about those specific sites? Like what are, what are the, what does the general plan say they are now? What is their zoning, et cetera? How many units could be put on them? I'd like to hear a lot more detail about those.
Yeah, yeah, so eleven of the twelve identified sites are currently residential mixed, so they allow up to twenty dwellings per acre. So the proposed rezon would increase that to thirty-five total, so.
So for the most part, it's just changing the zoning code to allow for higher density. It's not actually changing the general plan, except for one.
The general plan will need to be amended, just because currently the general plan language designation only allows up to twenty dwellings per acre.
You're just changing the language, we don't actually have to change-
Not the whole-
Property.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Couple of questions. So you mentioned you're accommodating for fifteen to thirty-five units, but you're saying thirty-five, right? I mean, that's what we're maxing them out basically to hit the numbers, is that the idea?
Uh, no, so we have that range and we, we assume that our parcel will develop at twenty, approximately twenty-five dwellings per acre. That's like the assumption, it's kind of like that, I believe it was, it was seventy percent of the maximum.
If we assume the maximum, pre-rezone like less land, like I know there's a couple like R six, R eleven that are, you know, south of Union Road, they're, I think Walnut Oaks right now. If we went to a higher and assumed the maximum of thirty-five, would we be able to accommodate arena without having to rezone more parcels like that?
Yeah, that, that's definitely possible. In, in that case, if we, we shrunk the amount of properties and increased the density that, that we're accommodating for, we will be required to provide past examples of development at, at those densities to justify the use of that. So the reason we did seventy percent of the max for our sites was just because that was closer in line with past examples in, in the city of Hollister, just because a, a lot of that higher density has been in the city itself. We were able to kind of like piggyback off that. So there is a case where you can reduce the amount of, of parcels and increase the density that we're accommodating almost parcels, but you would have to provide examples that, that it's happened, or provide justification that, you know, these parcels can be subsidized in some way or form to provide additional affordable units as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah. I mean, that's just, that was kind of my thought, that's the direction I'd like to go because I don't want to have to take more farmland outside of the, kind of, the city. Another question I had was, how did we come up with, as far as the pipeline projects? You, you said that they were anticipated to be approved? Was that, how do we come up with what projects were, were not anticipated to be approved?
Not anticipated to be approved, just projects that are currently in the review period and are actively going through the process. So responding, resubmitting, so that kind of is an indication that, that, you know, they're, 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 they're active in the process. It's not just a dormant, a dormant project.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that too, yeah. So a project has been approved already, it just hasn't been committed.
Got it, got it. And then last question I had was theoretically, could you zone? I don't know how you would word it if it ordinance or zoning or what, but could you set aside some parcel to be just specifically below moderate or moderate or below moderate, low, extremely low? Or does it, do you have to have only, you know, a percentage of it? Could you say one hundred percent?
It's a mix, yeah. We, we, we did a mixed approach where say, I don't know, parcel R eight here in the bottom, it's not all one income category.
Right. I understand, I understand. I'm saying, could you, if you wanted, make it all one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could say this parcel's only for low income.
Correct, correct. You can't, you can do that. In that situation though, we run into the affirmatively further fair housing issue, where if, if you concentrate all of your affordable housing just in one area, that's kind of a big red flag for HCD. Don't note that, you know? It's okay if that parcel alone is all affordable, but it can't just be just that parcel.
Got it.
It can't be, you know, a hundred units, that's all the affordable housing that's being accommodated only on that one.
Understood. Thank you, thank you. Some questions I have.
So hopefully you can hear me. We as a county have to be disciplined in following the arena rules, right? So we, we get that, and I believe everyone is in mind of, of doing so. But one concern that many residents have is the infrastructure off of twenty-five and the commuters leaving our county and coming back home. And that's just the, their quality of life, right? As far as them being in traffic for many hours. So we don't want to violate these rules and not build, but how can we get the state to help us with our infrastructure?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a, a big issue that, that we ran into during our analyses is, is the existing infrastructure. And, and, yeah, it, it's really a, a mix of, of a couple of different things. It's, you know, reaching out to, to elected officials at the state, having them advocate locally. And it, it's, it's difficult to, you know, we've seen jurisdictions trying to accommodate their housing, but then seeing, you know, we don't have enough or sufficient infrastructure to accommodate our total housing. So that, that is an issue, and it's really, it, it's kind of a, a, a collaboration with, with elected officials and, and elected officials in the county.
Great, thank you for letting us know. So just collaborate better with our state officials to get that done because the board of supervisors, I, I truly feel that they, they can't really, they want to help the community, but they can't, right? Because they just, what, you know, we, we, they don't want to violate anything, any rules. So thank you for that. Also with the, the dwellings, we currently have twenty dwellings per acre. Why is the state trying to compact many dwellings in one acre? Is it just to accommodate as well as like pushing the growth? Or, I mean, in reality, we all want to have a nice size barb, you know, backyard to have those nice family barbecue. So I'm just being realistic here. Why is it so compact?
Yeah, so, so the state, in, in their analysis, they believe that when you increase density, that just by design, unit, individual units will be more affordable because a developer can kind of spread the costs across those units, so it can reduce the overall cost to the individual tenant. I, I don't, I can't interpret what, what their, you know, reasoning for that was, but just based off of their, their, you know, memos, it's, for our county specifically, twenty dwellings is kind of like that sweet spot where it's-
Okay, I appreciate you answering that, thank you so much.
Supervisor Kozmicki?
Yeah, thank you. So the pipeline projects, I think it would be a benefit just to go through those as well. The map itself also didn't have, I mean, I, I've been around this county for a long time like everybody, but this isn't critical, but just maybe if we could get a, the map didn't have specific streets and things, so it was a little hard to read and try to put things together. Is it possible, whether it's today or planning staff can send out a list of all the pipeline projects that are listed there so we get a better handle on that? And I just want to reiterate and make sure that we're all on the same page, because you did say the pipeline projects were anticipated for approval. There are some controversial projects that were included there, so I don't want to be presumptuous. How does that play into, you know, arena and the state's perception of our housing element if, for instance, we deny said project or projects?
Yeah, yeah, I, I misspoke there, my apologies. The projects that were included, pipeline projects are not, you know, guaranteed or, or expected to, or granted, you know, approval. They're just projects that are active and have been submitting and resubmitting, so we anticipate that they will continue that. And as long as they meet, you know, all requirements, development standards, and, and so forth, you know, we, we think that they, they can get there. But, yeah, I think HCD, they, when they see projects that are, are denied, they really look at why they were denied, if it was denied for a reasonable cause, it's not an issue. And, and as long as there's communication back and forth between the, the applicant, you know, the county, and, and if the state, you know, wants to know what's going on as well, it, it's just open communication, you know, it's-
But those projects, if they're not zoned for residential, do they, they would have to be approved to count toward the arena, obviously? I guess what's the, what is the, so I see the rezone dots on the map and then I see, how, can you explain how those two different categories play into the arena and our compliance with arena?
Yeah, so, so the, the green sites, the, the rezone sites, those are identified sites. So these are sites that, you know, don't currently have an application or, or-
Can we pull that map up, please, so everybody can see it and the public can see it while you're talking about it?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought, I thought I could see it on the right side. There we go.
There you go. Thank you.
It's a little small, I can go into some of the zoomed in ones. I don't know, but, oh, this is perfect, okay. So we have like our green sites, a R three, R ten, R five. So these are our candidate sites. So these are sites that we think are, are, are sites that can accommodate housing. This is based off of, you know, the size of these parcels, the access to utilities, the location of them. And then on the right, we have P two, so that's the pipeline, that's, I believe, Santana Ranch. Yeah, so we'll see this, the reason this is added because they've been, it's, project's fully approved, usually you pull all their permits, so there's a certain amount that haven't been pulled, so we can take credit for those. Since they've been constantly, you know, submitting for those permits, we can reasonably assume that they'll finalize, have all of this within this pipeline, I was sorry, sorry, within this planning period. So that's similar for, for many of the other pipeline projects as well. So we kind of made some, some reasonable assumptions, just some guesses based off of where different projects are in, in, in the permitting process or in, in the review process as well. If the reason I mentioned here at the bottom, you'll see there's a buffer, so it's above arena need, the reason we have that is in case one of the pipeline projects falls out. So say one of these projects doesn't get approved or gets approved and, and they just decide, you know, it's not feasible to develop right now, we can, we, we're not solely relying on those projects. We have a variety of sites across.
Okay, great. Have we exhausted all options for infill?
Um, there, there's other infill sites that, that we can. We have, I believe, I don't have the list here.
Because I'll just say straightforward, I would prefer it all to be infill. I mean, I, you know, I know we've gotten away from, you know, we saw a map earlier of some of these prior- I mean, I, you know, I know we've gotten away from, um, you know, we saw a map earlier, some of these prior approved developments, which in hindsight are absolute, absolutely ludicrous, the, the amount of space between services and the development, but, um, we're getting a little better, but I still see that orange color on the outskirts, and I know San Juan Oaks is fifty-five plus, for instance, um, but I personally would prefer all of it to be infill, because we're a rural county, we're a farm community, I, I frankly don't understand why we're required to do this, I, this, a side note, but, um, so anyway, we're all, you said they weren't all necessarily exhausted, all the infill options?
There are other infill options, um, the, the reason we cho- so, of the twelve, not pipeline projects, the twelve, like candid sites, rezoned sites, uh, I believe six of those are infill sites, the other six are vacant, um, and the reason we chose those was because they're already residential mixed, so they already allow up to twenty dwellings per acre. Um, there are other infill sites that we can utilize, but they currently allow, say, for example, up to six, so we didn't wanna have such a dramatic increase from, you know, six dwelling use breaker to thirty-five, we thought that was a bit too dramatic of an increase, uh, for some of those infill sites, so we use, uh, we wanted to reduce the amount of sites that we have, we didn't wanna have like too many sites.
But wouldn't we rather just have infill and rezonate, and it's within the city already? I, that's just, I'm, I'm asking a rhetorical question, and I, maybe I don't have agreement on, in this panel, but I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't first address all infill, and, you know, as far as fulfilling our requirement, we may or may not develop it, um, and then look at some of the outskirts, um, potentially if we have to. That's just, you know, because I see, for instance, so you said R, so R six and R, wait, I'm just gonna pull up mine, cause I cannot read that far. Um, R, you said R, the ones, uh, that Supervisor Zanger mentioned, R?
These down here?
Six and eleven, was it? You're saying those are mixed use?
No, 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 uh, the, the general plan designation is residential mixed, so
Residential mixed?
Yeah, residential mixed, not mixed use, it's just residential.
They're, like you said, they're walnut orchards.
Yeah, currently, yeah, so here, uh, R six, this is mostly orchard, uh, I think there's, uh, what is that? Sorting and distribution on the corner end, um, and then same here on, on R eight. Uh, R six, that top sliver, uh, it's kind of very hard to see, but, uh, that was previously part of the same parcel that was, um, uh, subdivided to have housing there, so in our assumption, I believe for this parcel, our assumption is that thirty percent of the parcel will be like utilized, uh, so it wouldn't be, we're not assuming that the whole entire parcel will be developed as housing, it's thirty percent.
Is that the one we just recently subdivided? Um, no, it's not, that, is it a city subdivision? Cause we had one that we just recently subdivided for, um, we said it was no development plan at this time. I'm sorry, we don't have to get into minutia, I, I just, I would, I'm not crazy about R six and R eleven, Union Road there, I, they're walnut orchards, I, I, you know, as long as we have infill development, where, that we, where we can fulfill this, I would prefer to do infills first, that's all, I guess that's my, my main point on that, and then, um, let's see here, I think that's it for, like, questions, rhetorical questions. Are we, um, are we gonna make any other comments about just our thoughts on where this is going, or do you wanna wait for that, or?
You can make comments now, but there's more, more comments, I think, that are coming right now, did you wanna make a comment Supervisor Satello? And I'd like, yeah, so, wanna hold on?
Well, the overall, I just, I just wanna say the, the five thousand and five, um, you know, I was on CLOG two years ago, it was my very first meeting, we basically got handed this five thousand and five, and it was already too late. Um, there were some misstatements said about my role in that, but, on social media, but it was already too late, we couldn't go back, and it, and actually, um, so I don't, I don't quite understand how in the world, and, and I don't, I know you're, you're not a representative, I believe it was Ambag, um, I wasn't on Ambag at the time, but how we could end up with such a number for a community of this size? And, but I will say that we, CLOG did take that number, because initially, the unincorporated area was pegged for two, two thousand three hundred fifty-seven units, and the city of Hollister, two thousand five hundred, which just really underscores the misunderstanding of this community and really planning, um, in general, um, and we actually insisted that they adjust those numbers, and that's where we ended up with the seven hundred fifty, which is more reasonable, but it's still a big task for a community that has a highway that we don't have, you know, we, we have to get fixed and expand it, but how can you end up, do you, are we the only, are, are, are we in the, with a small minority here, or have you had experiences with other? I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste too much time here, but just can you comment on that, the five thousand and five is crazy?
Yeah, yeah, I think for, for most CLOGs, uh, for, across the state, we've seen a general increase, uh, to these Rena numbers, um, and it, it becomes increasingly difficult in, in more rural communities, more agriculture communities, uh, so we, we definitely see that, um, and, and yeah, it, it takes a lot of creativity to, to kind of figure it out and make it all work.
And then lastly, if we were to explore eliminating single-family zoning, which is not eliminating single family housing, it's eliminating single-family zoning, so you no longer would allow a subdivision that is strictly single-family housing, is that, is this the appropriate platform for that, or is that just simply a policy?
Yeah, I think that's more of a, of a comprehensive change to, to more of the, the general plan, yeah, that would be, I mean, that would help, you know, the housing element, but I don't think it's necessarily the, the approach to take to accommodate for the housing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Satello? Did you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I, I did, sorry, um, very briefly, um, I'm concerned about the, whoops, I'm concerned about the timing and the purpose of the community workshop, um, is that meant to be informational for the community, or is that meant to really, uh, generate feedback? And I think the answer is it's meant to generate feedback, I hope that's the answer. If that's the case, then I'm concerned that the timing of it is such that the, the, uh, housing element will be largely, um, created by then, and I presume there will be a process for incorporating the community's feedback, and then I presume also, a lot of presumptions, that the board of supervisors has to approve the, uh, submission of the housing element to the HCD at some point. I didn't see that as a, as a, um, as a time point on your timeline, but I guess it's probably there and just not called out explicitly?
Correct, yeah, and, and the intent is, yeah, to generate feedback, um, once we publish for public review, the public review period is, uh, thirty days, um, and then the, the jurisdiction is required to take at, at least ten, ten calendar days, uh, to consider incorporate any, um, any changes based off of public comment. Um, so, uh, the, the county can, as soon as we get feedback, we can start adjusting that, that, the document, uh, as required, uh, but the intent was that we took the feedback from, uh, uh, the last two or three public, uh, engagement events, and incorporated that into the document, so that when the public is able to see it, it's not, um,
And you'll do the same with the input from the community workshop?
Correct.
Thanks.
Supervisor Satello?
Thank you, um, I apologize, I don't know this, but I need you to help me understand. So, I see that there are several pockets, particularly in, what was it, the, mm, the southwest area? Like R two, R four, um, where was the other one, R twelve, are kinda pockets within the city?
Yes, so, so, yes.
So, how does that work? Um, I get their county designated properties right now, but if they were to go develop them, more than likely it gets annexed into the city, right? Who then gets credit for those Rena numbers, does it stay with the county? Or do those numbers now move over to the city?
Yes, so i- in that case where, uh, a property that is, the county's, i- is developed, or, or prior to development gets annexed into the city, uh, um, that parcel would be, so the county and the city would have to have some, some agreement, uh, of, of, of Rena essentially transfer, um, and HCD would be i- in that process as well, where those units, say, R twelve, just to have a big nice number, is a hundred units, that a hundred would be, through that agreement, it would essentially be removed from the county's need and be added to the city's need, since it was originally a county parcel, but if it's annexed into the county, it's essentially like the city took that land and is now responsible for the, the Rena on that parcel.
Okay, so, w- we would be free, I mean, we essentially are getting credit for
For that parcel.
The hundred units, or whatever it is.
It would be subtracted, yes.
Okay.
It would be an agreement though, with, between the county and the city, um, and, and at, to the legal point, I, I would, I would refer to, to your council, but, um, i- it, it is an agreement, and then you essentially would, would pass that through, through the state, and then it would essentially just be a Rena transfer.
Okay, and then in regards to the ADUs, um, so I see that on, kinda there was the projected ADU construction, there was extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, so two different questions with this, one is we have the program now where people can go and pick up kind of the plans that we already have, kinda the, the ready-made plans, um, so have we seen an improvement, are people taking advantage of that program and building more ADUs? And then secondly, um, how do we decide, or where is the designation? Um, you know, how are we figuring out if the ADU is above moderate, moderate, or extremely low, low?
Uh, yeah, so, so, as a response to, is, there's been an uptick in like interest and development, I, I think AD staff would better, uh, respond to that, but I think, um, i- it's kinda nuanced, because, uh, with increasing interest, we, we do see an interest, and because the plans are essentially ready-made, it's become, uh, less expensive to develop ADUs, but then there's a financing issue, so they kind of coincided where, you know, it's easier to develop, uh, a ADU in the county, but it may be more expensive because of the increased interest, so, there's, there's that issue, um, a- as to the, the amount of applications that are being received, I believe there has been an increase, right? We, we, we kind of, we've been tracking that and
It's pretty steady right now.
Yeah, and that's kind of, uh, we, we see that if we didn't have such a high increase, dramatic increase in interest rates, we could see that reasonably it would have increased, uh, uh, as intended, so we think once kind of things up allow, uh, we'll, we'll see that increase. Um, and then for the income category, so, um, just based of, off of, uh, ADUs that are permitted in the county, and then what we see on like rental websites, like, say, Zillow, Rentin, Apartments.com, whatever, a lot of these units aren't put on the market, so we assume they're being rented to family, uh, friends, whatnot, so a lot of that can be, uh, you know, assumed that it may be going to extremely low or low income, cause it's at, like, really a subsidized price, it may even be for, for, you know, uh, parents giving to their kids or something like that, um, and in, uh, there's an A-bag, uh, it's the, uh, ADU, it's cited in the document, uh, but it's, it's, um, uh, essentially an analysis of ADUs for the region, it's the A-bag region, um, but HCD has vetted it and approved it and allowed it for, uh, specific regions to also use those assumptions in there, so uh, the breakdown that you see in here, it comes from, from those assumptions.
It's really a formula, we don't really know that, okay.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And in, in the document, uh, in our housing plan, we have a program that, uh, i- is going to consider giving a, a voluntary, you know, waiver that someone who pulls a ADU permit, they, they don't, they're not obligated to fill it out, but it's more for recording purposes for, for staff, so they can know what it's being rented at, so that we can kinda track where, where it's at.
Okay, okay.
It'll be completely voluntary, but it's more just to kinda have a, 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 an understanding of what ADUs are being rented for, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you. Okay, well, I'm gonna piggyback, and then we can do another round if there's more questions and comments, um, but I'm gonna piggyback on Supervisor, both Cosmicke and Supervisor Satello. Um, number one, the reality of infilling would be fantastic if we knew we were gonna get credit for it. The, the infilling problem is, in order to get water service or sewer service, you're going to have to go through the city, and the city's going to use that to get their Rena numbers, so we have to have, call it what it is, the reality is, we may not get any numbers from some of these parcels that you have, it, it just might not happen. I mean, I would love it, it would be great, and I think infilling is the way to go, but we have to have a way, some sort of agreement. Number one, we don't have the infrastructure right now, which has been commented from others, we, we have a, a major traffic and road problem, so we're encouraging people from other counties to come here when we don't have the services even to support them, so how do we fulfill the state requirements? And recognize the fact that we don't have the infrastructure to bring in more physical bodies, but we wanna keep the people that we have here, cause we have young people that can't even afford, and seniors that can't even afford, to be on their own, because they're having to rely on family members, or, you know, support services, which just compounds the problem. I'm be, I'm not asking for any answer, I'm on, I'm on a soapbox, let me just do my soapbox thing. But in looking at this, it's, it's, it's also like, you know, we've had some sprawl, and how do we deal with some of the decisions that were made before any of us were on this board? Um, and how that sprawl, and what that sprawl looks like in the future, because if we're looking at the city of Hollister and their new sphere of influence and their new general plan, uh, how many, how much credit are we gonna get for those sort of things? And I think our numbers are outrageous, I completely agree, there is no way that the unincorporated area should be held to these levels um, of housing, it's just, that what they want is they want us to house Silicon Valley, that's what they want. They don't have any land in the Bay Area, they want us to build the housing, so that Silicon Valley can have someplace to live, and then they commute on our roads with our infrastructure that we do not have the money to afford, and then they spend their money in the Bay Area. So, I'm, I'm frustrated with this whole process, because the reality is, anything we do is going to be a challenge to get credit for our Rena numbers, because we rely on the city for services. Okay, with that said, um, looking at some of these numbers, I, I, I'm looking at your potential development capacity, um, none of us would ever be re-elected if we had four thousand nine hundred and forty-three developments of, of housing, it, it, it is the reality, I'm not gonna sit up here and act like this isn't the reality of it. Um, our community doesn't want this, and so I've had this conversation at the state level, I've talked to our representatives, we need to look at workforce housing for our workforce without it being held against us, that somehow we're playing favorites for San Benito residents, I think we need to play favorites for San Benito residents, because we're pushing them out of our county, and we're bringing in people that then don't care about our egg land, and that, that wasn't egg land like the egg, it was egg land, sorry. Um, so that's my frustration, so I don't know what the answer is, I just think that we have to look at things, and, and some of the decisions that were made in the past, and go, okay, that decision was made, now how do we move forward, and what does our future, um, general plan look like for the county in the future? And this is something I've talked with staff about, how do we bring in our general plan with our housing element, with our zoning, and really be able to see what that future looks like, and make sure our, our, our future ag element is included in there? Because I feel like everything that's being done is just kinda chomping up egg land. And I will say, on the west side, even though I would never have supported the Santana Ranch project if I had been on the board of supervisors, I would never have supported it, it's one of the areas that we don't have productive egg land. And, you know, in talking to so many of the people from the ag industry and community, it's where, where can you build that you have infrastructure potential, but not have to squash our egg land, so? Um, I, I did a speech instead of a question, I'm sorry.
Final thoughts, maybe? Um, I don't really wanna go over to the pipeline projects, cause we will deal with those as they come, uh, but I would like to, at some point, whether it's now or offline, go over each and every one of the rezoned parcels and talk about yay, nay, uh, what the numbers would look like, that kinda thing.
Yeah, definitely, uh, in, in the public review draft, you'll see there's a couple tables, one of the main tables in the sites analysis section will be the pipeline projects, uh, the total units, the breakdown units, and project descriptions, all of that, you'll be able to see that as well, uh, same for, for the rezoned sites, uh, in there as well. Um, and I think this is a, a good point to, to reiterate, I think Supervisor Zanger, we, we spoke about, uh, the reduction of sites, and then, uh, increasing the density, so, um, i- in that case, if you have, uh, a reduction of, of total sites, um, I think an increase of the density i- is, is, is required, um, in the case that one of the sites, you know, falls out, we have less sites to accommodate, uh, zoning, uh, sorry, to accommodate, uh, units, um, so if you have another site that can kind of, uh, 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 have a higher, uh, capacity, then, then you can kind of move the numbers around so that it works. But if you, if you leave the density low, and then also reduce the sites, you run into issue, uh, called no net loss, so, uh, this, the county is required to not have a net loss of units, um, and in the case, if you lose one site, uh, and you don't have other sites identified, um, you, you come into an issue of, of, of a net loss of, of units.
Go ahead, Supervisor Zanger.
Just, yeah.
Just, yeah, question. Um, it's kind of based on what Rosario Curro was, was saying about if, if say we get something infill. There's a development and then the city takes our rena credit away. Does HCD as far as approving our map and our plan, are they going to consider that? Or, I mean, we could, will we still get approved and then have to deal after the fact with, uh, numbers?
That's exact, yeah, that's exactly what will happen. You can get approved as is identified. Um, so the sites that are identified in the county's housing element are not identified in the Hollister's housing element. If that was an issue, whether we're kind of like double dipping on a site, say for, sorry, it's not up there. But say for example, one parcel was identified for the county and also identified for the city of Hollister. At that time, that would be an issue. Um, and neither of the city, neither jurisdiction would be approved. But as we have it now, um, it, it, you know, go through the process, be approved. And in the case that further down the line, uh, property that we've identified in the county is annexed, um, that, that would be an issue for later. But we can have a certified document. It's fine. Um, and once that annexation process goes on, that's a, a problem for, for. Not a problem, but just you got to figure that out. Yeah, situation for later. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Gibson?
Oh, go right ahead. I think it was five thousand and five homes over approximately seven hundred and eighty-something a year added. Is that right?
Uh, let me see. So from the last, yeah, the last cycle, it was eight hundred and thirty-seven, uh, there we go, uh, eight hundred and thirty-seven, yeah. And then we have an overall reduction of, uh, eighty-three. So now we have seven hundred and fifty-four to, to accommodate for. And that's just for the unincorporated.
Same per year.
Oh, yeah, correct. It's about, I don't know, less than a hundred a year, I think.
What I just, what percent, my concern is the roads that you, you're adding all these homes and, and Highway twenty-five is surely the way in and out. I know you have to meet your state numbers, but how, how is that going to work for people who have to commute if you're adding that many per year? I, 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 I mean, is there, are you get, are you, is there a way to get funding to, to, if you're adding all these homes? How do you, how do you get funding for the road to, that these people? Cause I don't know what percentage. I read a ridiculous number, like eighty percent of the people that are buying homes are commuting from the, is, is that true?
I, I'm not sure, uh, but.
Does it sound right?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I'm going to comment on that. That's pretty accurate with new buyers, based on the information that we've received from, um, the planning department and developers. Is that eighty percent of new buyers are from out of our county. And that is my big problem.
Isn't that frightening?
It is. And that's why I'm, I'm my soapbox.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll see in the mornings, people are going, going out at night.
And, and to her point, these people are spending money not here.
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah.
Um, first I want to thank you, Brian, for your patience. Um, so, and your, all your responses. Um, but we, we have to comply no matter what. In the end, we're gonna comply, right? And these homes are gonna come eventually. This is zoning, okay.
Yeah, um, the, the county won't be required to build them per se, but, um, we do have to accommodate, accommodate for.
So we, we do have to accommodate, I guess we will use that word. Um, however, um, going on the soapbox, um, with Angela, I understand that it's a frustration. And I know you can't do anything, but as a board up here, we need to focus on communicating with our elected officials through the state. Again, pushing that, um, you know, Speaker Robert Rivas and Congresswoman Zoe Loughran. We have to speak to them and let them know if, if this doesn't, the infrastructure, people are suffering. So the, you know, the commute is hurting family members. And just having more homes and more impact on our roads is going to hurt them. And, you know, people don't like to listen or maybe call out memes, but they are there, they're put in those positions to represent us. And what great position Speaker Robert Rivas is now to help our county in San Jose so we can get that fit, road fixed. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Going back to the infill.
Get up to the mic if you can.
Sorry. How do we, going back to the infill for all these parcels within the city that are county? We need to direct staff or someone to start working with the city. So we either split those numbers fifty-fifty or we get them all. So I don't know where we start. Abraham.
I totally agree. And if we want to really stop the, stop the sprawl, it, it's something that has to be discussed.
And we got to start kicking this into our own hands. We've got to start getting this done.
Must let Abraham know.
And that, that very good point, Commissioners Galliore. And that's part of, we, we discussed those questions before coming up here. Cause we, we thought that that was going to be, uh, brought up and, and, and Brian did a good job of addressing it as he was presenting it. Especially when he was talking about the, like sidewalk property that's very like surrounded by forested, right by, right by, or hardened. And yeah, that's what we, we were talking about. Of course, you know, the city's not going to be developed in anything unless they say it's either annexed or we provide out of jurisdiction services. But if it's within this, surrounded by city, they're gonna likely, based on our conversations with them. Uh, specifically on this last property Ray and I met, um, with, with city staff. And they're, you know, they're more towards annexation if it's going to be within the sphere of influence. And so one of the things that we're talking about is in order for that, for properties to go to LAFCO for annexation, there needs to be a property tax exchange agreement approval. And so that's where we can discuss as well, the, um, who gets what in regards to allocations. And, you know, definitely get our part, um, definitely, I mean, being that they are within our county's jurisdiction. I mean, we would want to get all of it, if not the, the majority, if not all of it, so.
You brought up tax, property tax. That's a whole nother conversation. Supervisor Cosmiki.
Yeah, I just want to sort of bring some clarity if I can, if possible, unless I'm wrong here, but we're talking about rezoning here. We're not talking about building. This is zoning. You have to accommodate for, you have to zone for, you do not have to approve these projects to get, to get credit, correct?
This is to plan for, correct, not to build.
So if we plan for all this infill and we don't necessarily approve it, we're going to get the credit, correct?
You, when you accommodate, you can get certified, but you won't get the credit for the units for meeting your rena until those units are developed. And, and you'll report that in every year through the APR, the annual progress report. So you can get certified for rezoning and, and accommodating for it, but then every year you still have to report on it.
Okay. So in that event, um, HCD and their seven hundred and fifty-four units, I can tell you right now, they can go climb a tree as far as I'm concerned. I'm not approving, I'm not going to approve seven hundred and fifty-four units. It's just not going to happen. So, uh, you know, if that means that we don't get some funding for X, Y, and Z, then so be it. I'm not going to allow, I'm not going to sit here and misrepresent my constituency that, you know, I vowed to represent. And, um, if it means we don't get a few hundred thousand dollars here and there for projects, then, then, then so be it. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
I appreciate the comments, but also I want to make sure i- if we do not move forward, not just with this, this part of zoning and being prepared for it. We run the risk of it's, it's our general plan, our zoning, and then our housing element all come together and we can't say no. There's a point where developers will have authority over us and we will not have a say. And I'm, I'm looking at you guys because I want to know if this is accurate information. If we aren't fulfilling and showing that we're moving forward on this, the state can step in and start assigning where housing will be in our community. Is that a fair statement?
So yeah, there is, there is something called the builder's remedy, uh, where jurisdictions that are not in compliance with, uh, housing element law. Um, may lose local, um, uh, local control over development, where it may go directly to the state. Something may be hypothetically approved at the state level, um, in, in the jurisdictions as well. So, um, so we recommend, you know, going through the process. Um, you don't necessar, you can kind of buck quote unquote the, the issue down the line by just getting us, uh, accommodating for, for your units. And then once it comes to individual projects, considering them, right, on a project.
Which can open us up to litigation. It can open us up to challenges on our general plan.
Yeah. And, and, uh, yeah, loss of funding as well, like.
And loss of funding, which I, I agree. If it's only a few hundred thousand dollars here and there, I really don't care. But then it's the loss of control and having the state come down on us when we know, well, pretty much it was stated at our, our legislative workshop. Uh, Speaker Rivas is very disappointed in this community for not embracing the housing elements that we need to be providing. I agree, we need higher density and we need the infill, but we need credit for doing that. And if we can't get credit for doing that and we can't house our residents and our workforce, then this isn't working for us. And I have no problem saying that too, Speaker Rivas. I, I'll say it much nicer.
Madam Chair, one last thing that just came to mind. So the San Juan Oaks project is going to start, um, building out over, incidentally, I think like eight years. Um, how much of that project could we potentially use toward this?
All, all of it. The entire, as long as it, if everything is final by the end, uh, by June thirtieth, twenty thirty-one, you can take credit for all of those units.
Okay. So yeah, that's my focus, is trying to get these previously approved projects, get as much of the allocation out of previously approved projects that we can get would be my preference. And, but also San Juan Oaks would be limited there because it's, 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 it's not, um, low income, very low income. It is, uh, active adult, but it's not, so we could meet some of the numbers, but not all of the numbers.
So that project alone will be essentially all of the above, right?
I had a question if we're, just on the last thing you said, Madam Chair. Um, regarding if we say we, we have, we get this certified, we're all good, but then we're not hitting our numbers appropriately. And you said hypothetically, the state could, um, come in and sort of do their own sort of planning and zoning or?
No, so they, they, they can only do that before certification. Uh, once you're certified, uh.
So if we get the map certified, if we get this certified, it doesn't matter. You're saying they won't?
They don't have control over.
Oh, so even if we don't hit the numbers, they don't?
That's only, yeah, that's only during the period that the, that the jurisdiction is out of compliance.
Okay, got it. Clear it up. Thank you.
But to be clear, in the future, if we are not showing that we're actually building anything, that's, so you're saying, that was where my question was. If we're not showing that we're actually meeting any of our low or very low income, uh, housing needs, that, that can come back and bite us? Is that not true?
Yeah, not, not in the sense of, of development, the, you know, you're still going to have a little control over, over development. Um, in that situation where, you know, you have a certified document, uh, but you're just not meeting your rena. Um, that's a different situation where, you know, the, the state might come and, and ask, you know, m- maybe identify additional sites or, um, uh, increase capacity or, um, you know. They're just going to try to get the county to commit to things that are going to spur additional development.
But this would be something that would update our general plan and our zoning. And so that, with the housing element, that opens developers to having a stronger voice. And so if we are rejecting, we have to reject on very legal grounds to be able to ensure that we're not being sued. I'm just making sure I'm looking long-term about where this could bite us. Cause I have no problem approving the plan and then saying no to some stuff, but I got to say, we need housing. There's no way you can not say that we don't need housing, but we need housing that helps our residents. And that's the part that I'm struggling with.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, does this address like farmworker housing? So if we approved, say, a farmworker housing project of, you know, a hundred units or something like that, do we get credit for that in this? Or is there a special carve-out for that?
That, yeah, that'll count towards, uh, lower income or, or, or very low income.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any more comments? Yes, go right ahead. One more comment.
So, um, it's something that we have to balance out, right? Cause we want to approve this so we don't get, you know, you know, stop in the hand, I guess. But we also have, these are all considered low, moderate, you know, low income housing. So we don't want to remove that from our community members. So it's a little heartbreaking that, that we don't want to build because of the infrastructure, but then we don't want to violate. It's a little, you know, it's just heartbreaking to me to hear that because being Hispanic and being part of my, that community. We need the low, lower income, moderate homes. So it's just unfortunate. That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may.
Go right ahead.
I represent the west side now very proudly and I agree, we do, we do need more low income housing and to do whatever we can to accommodate that. But one of the problems we have right now is we have a policy of, we only require fifteen percent affordable. So if we're really serious about, you know, increasing the number of low income units in our developments that we have that come forward with us that maybe don't have to be so controversial, then maybe we could consider increasing our mandate for low income housing. And maybe we can do a better job of trying to recruit nonprofit, um, developers to come in and, and, you know, to put up largely affordable housing. Preferably mixed-use housing, that's always going to be my preference. I think we should, whatever we can do to carve out more areas for mixed-use, if we're going to do housing. That's really preferable as far as building a community because you're, you're actually building a community. You're not just plopping housing down somewhere and sort of randomly hoping that it works out. Uh, anyhow, go ahead. Sorry.
No, yeah, um, it, it, you should, want to reiterate that, that, um, the sites that are identified aren't, may not develop the way we assume or the way we accommodate in the plan. Uh, the, the, uh, individual applicants that come in will, will kind of determine that. Um, but our, our programs, our policies are, are meant to, to make it easier to, to, uh, you know, attract, uh, develop all development. Um, to make it easier to, to develop, uh, affordable units as well. Um, and, and when it comes to like funding and whatnot, a lot of that is what brings affordable housing. Uh, is, is that funding, uh, coming from, from, you know, from the state. Um, and, and, you know, we want a plan that's going to balance it. And it's kind of a, a delicate balance between having, uh, you know, development patterns that we can, we can, we can estimate. We can kind of, um, expect, but also having a balance of, of, of development that, that we want and that we like. Um, and, and yeah, some, some of our sites can, we can kind of move or, or, or adjust the affordability, uh, of, of individual sites. So we can kind of make some sites, you know, more majority affordable, uh, some sites, uh, you know, majority above moderate. But we do want to make sure that there's a balance of those units. We don't want to isolate specific, uh, uh, income categories of specific areas.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, that's okay.
I'm just curious about the timeline. It seems really rather aggressive right now. Are we, I mean, is there a certain, like, we have to have this done by, I, I don't know, a certain time period? Or, um, it just seems like we're doing this joint meeting, which is fantastic and getting kind of the feedback. But it seems like there's a lot of work to be done in one month before we meet together again. We have this kind of town hall. Um, am I missing something or is this just, I mean, I'm, I'm excited to see things moving along so quickly, but it's kind of a surprise. And I want to make sure that we're being really thoughtful, that we're, you know, it seems like there's been a lot of questions today asked, a lot of information we'd like brought back. Um, do we have the ti, uh, you know, what is the time looking like on all of that? To make sure that kind of everybody's concerns are being heard and questions answered as well as not just ours, but getting the community's feedback as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely a, a, a valid concern. The next about three weeks or so, um, it's not, it'll be a lot of work for, for, for you all to read it. It's about, how many pages is it now? Like three hundred, something like that. It'll be a lot of pages. Uh, but for, for our team working on the housing element, uh, so staff and, and our consultant team, we're, we're pretty much at the finish line. There's, there's very few things to tweak and, and, and update. Um, based off of the feedback and direction that you provided today, we will continue to update that. Um, with, with the anticipation of publishing that public review draft, uh, wi- within the next, you know, two to three weeks. So, um, a lot of these changes, a lot, I'm sorry, a lot of the work is, is, is done, you know, three hundred something pages. Um, that we've been working on for the last, you know, over, over half a year now. Um, so a lot of it's done. It's really the, the, the tweaking and whatnot. So, um, you know, uh, our, our team and, and staff, we've gone through, uh, many work sessions, uh, going through sites and, you know, feasibility of development on there, zoning, infrastructure, like all, all that. So, um, there are things that we can change, uh, ba- based off of your direction as well, uh, but they won't be too substantial.
So is there a hard time deadline for this to be submitted to HCD?
So the, the, the hard, hard deadline was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and they, yeah, so.
And we have a hundred and eighty-day grace, right?
A hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty-day grace. Yep. Hence the emergency.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so technically even after that a hundred and twenty days, um, on the state's, you know, uh, HCD website, it'll show that, that the city is, uh, out of compliance, but it will show that is in the review.
You mean the county?
The county, sorry.
Just making sure.
Yeah. And as long as you're in, in the, uh, you're active with resubmitting, working on those drafts, the, the, the state doesn't care. They have, you know, hundreds of other ones that they're checking. So as long as they know that you're actively. So as long as they know that you're actively, uh, participating in the process, they're hands-off. Just, you know, work with us, we'll work with you. Um, we haven't gotten, uh, uh, any, anything from the state yet. Um, and, and I know staff has, has reached out to H C D's enforcement arm, and they mentioned the same thing. Uh, like, thank you for letting us know. You're, you're a bit behind, but we look forward to your documents, so.
One question. When did the RENA numbers come out, the allocation?
Uh, it's June, February, October? Yeah, the RENA determination, it was, uh, I believe, the, the, yeah, summer.
Twenty-two?
I think twenty-two, I think. Yeah, I think summer twenty-twenty-two, yeah.
So, once, there was the period of you received the RENA numbers, but then there was the whole process of breaking up those RENA numbers. So then, we didn't get our jurisdictions' file numbers to, till a certain point. And then from there, we had to do an R F P, and we actually got zero responses. And so then there was a delay of, um, going again and trying to get, um, get consultants on board because every jurisdiction in the state of California was working on it. So, that was part of our, our delays.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, and please, I hope, not personal, this is just frustration from multitude of levels of what our challenges are and the fact that, you know, our residents are very, very frustrated with our, 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 our infrastructure. And we have to really look at that. And I think, um, uh, some of the things that the board's doing will hopefully help support that. Um, but we have to really look at, uh, what's best and how do we keep our residents in our community? So, um, with that, any last comments? Going once, twice? Okay, uh, with that, I think that's the end of this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you all.